This time we'll call the Urban Renewal Authority Special Meeting to order and ask Secretary to call the ball.
Chair Hughesman.
Present.
Vice Chair Frank.
President.
Commissioner Madera.
Present.
Commissioner Alan Thomas.
President.
Commissioner Noble. Commissioner Wardiola. Commissioner Hurst.
Present.
Commissioner Grimes.
Present, and Commissioner Wardiola is having technical difficulties getting logged in.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Present.
Commissioner Fairfield? Commissioner Lewis?
Present.
Commissioner Tedesco?
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. This time I'm looking for a motion to excuse those members not present. Commissioner Grimes?
Motion to excuse those members not present.
Vice Chair Frank?
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second to excuse those members not present. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Madera?
Yes.
Commissioner Alan Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Noble? Commissioner Wardiola? Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Grimes?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Fairfield? Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Tedesco?
Yes.
Vice Chair Frank?
Yes.
Chair Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you, sir. First item on our agenda is a consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to the commission for a single motion and vote. Any member of the commission may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are three items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to remove an item off the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Vice Chair Frank?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Commissioner Grimes?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the secretary is not required to read the titles. We'll take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Madera?
Yes.
Commissioner Alan Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Noble? Commissioner Wardiola? Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Grimes?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Tedesco?
Yes.
Vice Chair Frank?
Yes.
Chair Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is a discussion on the modification of MDA and Affordable Housing Loan. Will General Counsel Sheasley please lead the discussion?
Thank you, Chair Hughesman. Good evening, members of the board. This is a brief item, I hope, tonight, where the developer for the Greyhound Park, Dell West or Greyhound Park LLC, has asked us for a concession that really has no financial impact, and staff recommends it to help the affordable housing project go forward. Essentially, as outlined in the packet, the master development agreement gives, in a somewhat unlikely scenario, a right to some funds to that developer, Greyhound Park or Dell West. If the commercial tract that the URA still owns and will develop is sold, and then there's money left over for after some infrastructure needs, the URA and Dell West split that fifty-fifty essentially for a five-year period. Because the URA loaned three point seven five million dollars to a related entity for the Affordable Housing Project, which is Greyhound Park Apartments Triple LP, the URA got a promise that if that money happened to wind its way into the developer's hand, that part of those funds would come back as a prepayment essentially on that, or prepayment of those loan obligations. So one, it's a potentially unlikely event to actually happen to have money left over for that. But the affordable housing financing is fairly complex and involves a few other lenders, and they've requested that that obligation of the affordable housing entity to repay the loan early be removed, even though it was a very clean transaction. They have, we're trying to do this to assist them with getting to closing, getting the deal done. The developer, Greyhound Park LLC, that is obligated to give up those funds should they get them, has offered as an alternative to use those same funds to pay the URA to buy a part of the loan. So the URA still gets its loan paid down early is the net effect. And so because of the various approvals of the board, we're requesting that the board authorize the director to modify the loan to both delete that prepayment and then negotiate a side agreement to modify the MDA and other agreements to accomplish that loan purchase that was the alternative. So kind of a tangled web, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, there is a suggested motion in the pack.
Any commissioners have any questions for General Counsel? Seeing none, does anyone wish to make a motion? Vice Chair Frank?
I motion to authorize the executive director to modify the CCURA Affordable Housing Loan to delete the prepayment provision and to negotiate and execute an agreement to modify such agreements as necessary to accomplish the recommended loan purchase.
Thank you, Commissioner Madera.
Second.
Think you have a motion and a second to authorize the executive director to modify the CCURA Affordable Housing Loan to delete the prepayment provision and to negotiate and execute an agreement to modify such agreements as necessary to accomplish the recommended loan purchase. Is there any discussion?
Mayor Hughesman, this is Commissioner Tedesco.
Yes, sir.
I apologize, my unmute button was fighting with me and I wasn't able to get on for comment or questions. I do have a question for Mr. Sheasley about the agreement that Adams County has for our portion is based on the affordable housing and how does that affect or what would the outcome be for that agreement and would we have to modify in Adams County to accept or to implement this?
No, I don't believe, so Commissioner Tedesco, the net result is to the CCURA made the same loan and will be paid back early on the same terms essentially. The affordable housing entity will remain subject to that that obligation to repay the CCURA, but all the parties remain obligated to build the minimum number of affordable housing units that we contracted for, and this is a step towards making sure that happens on time.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Madera?
Yes.
Commissioner Alan Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Noble? Commissioner Wardiola? Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Grimes?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Fairfield? Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Tedesco?
Yes.
Vice Chair Frank?
Yes.
Chair Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is a public hearing for Resolution URA two zero two zero dash zero three for adopting the 2021 budget. Tonight's public hearing was continued from October nineteenth. At this time, I will reopen the public hearing. Ask if any commissioners have any questions for the staff. Seeing none, Mr. Secretary, is anyone registered to speak on this item?
Chair Hughesman, no members of the public registered to speak on this item and no written comments were received by the deadline.
Thank you very much. Given that, I will close the public hearing. This time, I'm looking for a motion and a second to adopt a resolution URA two zero two zero dash zero three. Commissioner Grimes?
So moved.
Vice Chair Frank?
Second thought.
Have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution URA two zero two zero dash zero three. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Madera?
Yes.
Commissioner Alan Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Noble, Commissioner Wardiola, Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Grimes?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Fairfield, Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Tedesco?
Yes.
Vice Chair Frank?
Yes.
Chair Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you, everybody. That concludes everything we had on the agenda for the Urban Renewal Authority Special Meeting. At this time, we will adjourn. And we will start the council meeting in two minutes with the same Zoom meeting. Looks like all the URA commissioners have left, so we'll go ahead and get the council meeting started. This time, I'll call the regular meeting of the city council to order. Ask the city clerk to please call the ball.
Mayor Hughesman?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Present.
Councilmember Madera?
Present.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Present.
Councilmember Noble? Councilmember Wardiola? Councilmember Hurst?
Present.
Councilmember Grimes?
Present.
Councilmember Smith?
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. This time, I'm looking for a motion to excuse those members not present. Councilmember Grimes?
Motion to excuse those members not present.
Councilmember Hurst?
False second.
Have a motion and a second to excuse those members not present. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Hurst?
Handcuffed, I apologize.
Seeing no request for discussion, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble, Councilmember Wardiola, Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes seven to zero.
Thank you. This time, we'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody in the Zoom webinar, please unmute your microphone so that you can join us in the Pledge of Allegiance after the city clerk displays the flag.
I apologize, mayor. I was having a little bit of issue sharing my screen. Here we go.
Thank you. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America.
For which it stands.
One nation. Under God. Thank you. All public comment will occur during citizen communication except for public hearings. Persons who register to speak under multiple items will be allowed to speak multiple times. Public hearing testimony will occur during the public hearing portion of the meeting. Does any council member wish to move to modify this practice? Seeing none, we will move into citizen communication. Per council policy, citizen communication is the time on our agenda for the public to address council on business and affairs of the city. The city council is not able to hear any comments at this time on land use matters that are before or may become before council. Please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing. As a reminder, council must wait until administrative council business to take action in response to citizen communication. The city needed advanced registration in order to participate in citizen communication for this meeting. If you are currently in this meeting to speak during citizen communication, please listen for me to call your name and the clerk will unmute you so you may begin. If you do not respond or are disconnected, you may miss your chance to comment. Please give your name and address for the record and keep your comments limited to three minutes. Thank you. We have two individuals who registered to speak tonight. The first is Ben Martinez. He wants to speak about ordinance twenty-three hundred.
Ben, you should be able to unmute yourself and you'll have three minutes once you begin.
Hey there. Good evening, everybody. I'm here right now. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Ben, whenever you're ready.
So we're talking about, one of the ordinances that wants to be passed here is about the third-party deliveries for restaurants and the percentage fee that they charge for deliveries. So right now, it ranges anywhere from twenty to thirty percent depending on which third-party delivery is being used. As a restaurateur and other restaurants in the metro area, we all know that margins are thin at about a four to eight percent margin rate. And when you take on the twenty to twenty-five percent, even thirty percent of times of delivery fees, it makes absolutely zero sense to even use any of the third-party deliveries for restaurants because of the fact that that cuts significantly into the profit margin for said restaurants. With that said, a ten to fifteen percent fee is feasible. It's still on the edge of being profitable, but it's something that could be managed within each individual restaurant. At this time, L. Hardin uses no third-party deliveries because of the fee structure that's built in with the third-party delivery companies that are out there. And with that said, we would definitely have to look into numbers that would reduce those fees and then move forward at a time to see if that is significant enough for us as an individual business to see if we can use those services. For other restaurants in the, in the area, I'm not sure exactly how their structure and their financial numbers are right now. But for L. Hardin, we're definitely looking at ten to fifteen percent would be something manageable, but not a guarantee even at that point. And that, that ends my, my comments on that unless you guys have any other questions.
There. Next on the list is Nick Hoover, who also wishes to speak on ordinance twenty-three hundred.
Nick, you should be able to unmute yourself and you'll have three minutes once you begin.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can, yep.
Excellent. Thank you very much and good evening. My name is Nick Hoover. I am the manager of government affairs for the Colorado Restaurant Association. And I'm here tonight testifying in support of the proposal to temporarily cap the fees that restaurants pay to third-party delivery companies at fifteen percent. Restaurants have been severely impacted by COVID-19 public health orders, limiting their indoor capacities and last call times. Restaurants are already telling us that half of them will be forced to consider closing within the next six months if nothing changes. Third-party delivery fee caps represent an opportunity for local governments like Commerce City to throw their restaurants a lifeline in a time where every little bit will help. The three, there are three key points to this ordinance. The first, temporarily capping the fee at fifteen percent will allow restaurants to take advantage of takeout delivery in these fall and winter months at a reasonable rate. Under the current system, as was alluded to by the previous testifier, restaurants are assessed to rate anywhere between fifteen to thirty-five percent. From the research we've done, somewhere between twenty and twenty-five percent, restaurants say they lose all profitability in that sale. The ordinance would also prohibit third-party delivery companies from using a restaurant's information or menu without the restaurant's explicit consent. This is a problem that has been going on in the state of Colorado for years, and we're happy to see this included in the ordinance. The ordinance would also facilitate consumer transparency by outlining all of the costs associated with their purchase. This includes the price of the meal, sales tax, tip, and any delivery fees on the consumer side. This proposal will offer Commerce City restaurants immediate financial relief and support them through the coming months when they will be struggling with reduced capacities and the loss of outdoor dining spaces. Thank you for your time and your consideration, and that ends my comments.
Thank you. Members of the public were also able to submit comments online and by mail. No written comments were received by the deadline. If anyone wishes to speak at future council meetings, please check the meeting agenda and city website for information on how to register or submit written comments. Next on the agenda are presentations. First is a COVID-19 update. Would interim city manager Roger Tinklberg please provide an update on the city's overall response to the COVID-19 crisis?
Mr. Mayor, point of order, this is Susan Noble. There was no roll call taken at the beginning of the council meeting, and I want to be noted as present for the council meeting, please.
A roll call was taken. Members were not present at the time of the roll call. We're excused. Mr. Tinklberg, you're able to do your presentation now.
Thank you, Mayor. City staff continues to operate under the 2020 budget reductions and turning directly to COVID-19. Cases have increased in Adams County, and we're seeing increased cases in most of the states across the nation. Adams County was moved to level three on the state's dial, if you will, from level two, and that means additional restrictions on businesses, unfortunately. We've had people complain that masks are not working. I would say, of course, they don't work when people don't wear them. When a hundred and forty people gather in a home for a Halloween party and don't wear masks, my question is, do they expect Halloween to scare the virus away? This is not an issue of personal liberty or politics. This is an issue where we're trying to protect people. We wear seat belts. We stop at stop signs, and that's to protect ourselves and our neighbors. Wearing a mask is no different. I hate wearing a mask. I'm with people on that. But the point is, we have to protect our neighbors and protect our loved ones. Our businesses are going to die if people don't wear masks. There's also the need to wash hands and stay socially distant. We cannot whip this virus if we don't do those things. So I'll get off my soapbox and continue on. We're continuing to publish information about a number of programs to assist members of the community, and those are outlined in the city manager update each week. And I'll talk about the specific programs a little bit later on. With that, I'll turn it over to deputy city manager Lakeman for a report on the internal services.
Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor and city council. Good evening. I'm going to start tonight with courts. So Judge David Juarez, out of concern for public safety, has announced that he is going to be issuing an order continuing all municipal jury trials until at least the seventh of December. That's going to mirror what's happening within Adams County courts. There are several counties out there that have either gone fully to viral court or partially to viral court. And we are currently, as a city, evaluating what would need to happen in order for us to be able to do that also if necessary, if the decision comes to that. The courts and IT are working on testing right now for the full court system software, and the e-ticketing project is finally going to be going live at the end of the month. And IT has distributed ninety-three laptops. It took him about ninety days from order to completion, so it was done very, very quickly. And in the event that things get not better here in the city, we will be a little further down the road than we were even in the March-April timeframe. Moving on to HR, this is open enrollment period right now. And for all of you in council, as well as for retirees, your packets are being mailed out right now. And you will have until the twentieth of November in order to make your selections and return your, your elections. There are virtual meetings, if you're interested in hearing any more about that, that can help participants to make decisions as it pertains to their benefits for next year. Under the Affordable Care Act, we have twenty-two variable hour employees that will be benefit eligible next year. There are several trainings that are being done virtually and events that are being done virtually. And also, HR is working with their NeoGov system, which is a system that we use when we on, well, when we, at this point, when we're bringing people onboard, we're going to up the software such that we will be able to evaluate all candidates across the city directly from the software, and then also to be able to use that software for new hire orientation so that it does not necessarily have to be done in person. Some of it we do, but also giving people the opportunity to be new hire oriented completely off of an online system. Within community relations, we are pleased to announce that we do have our digital communication specialist onboard. He began last week, and he is working on social media and website updates at this time. We continue to publish the latest information about public health updates on our website, and staff has added both English and Spanish lists of the local resources, including that utility information on our COVID page. The Facebook post that Tri County had recently put out extending the local health order requiring face masks was the most popular of all the posts in the last two weeks, and it received more than six thousand people viewing it. And what else? The city has received thirteen applications for the nonprofit funding grants that we are looking at doing. It was open last week. It did close at five o'clock today, and we do have thirteen applications for that. We'll be opening the restaurant and bar grants. It, right now, it is being opened, and it's going to include language for the outdoor dining within it. The family assistance and the senior grants are going to be posted this week as well. And they will be actually open beginning of next week. The next financial update, which needs to go to Adams County in response to the CARES Act, is on November nine, and so we will be presenting new numbers to you at that time. And that is my update. I will pass this back to Mr. Tinklinburg.
Thank you very much. So looking at the community services departments, starting with community development, again, staff continues to work on the comprehensive plan. And the number of projects in process has remained steady. Number of those we've talked about specifically in the past, like the Legato Development, the Affordable Housing Project at Seventy-second and Colorado, the Hundred and Fourth and Joliet Industrial Project, Third Creek West, Cast Property, all of those, those are continuing on. Oil and gas, some dates have been set tentatively. For example, for the planning commission to examine the LDC amendments. That's anticipated to be on January five, and then it would come to city council on February one. And second reading on the ordinance, first reading on February one, second reading on March one. So just to give you a sense of the dates coming up for those. In terms of building safety, in October, they conducted three thousand one hundred and forty-four inspections. So you can see, again, construction work continues steady in spite of COVID-19. Also, there was a number of facility expansions, Rocky Mountain West, Park and Fly. Becknell is moving forward with their large buildings as well as Bimbo Bakery expansion. All of those continue to progress through the review cycle. Just giving you a couple of highlights on, on that area. And then in terms of neighborhood services, October twenty-sixth was the effective date for transitioning to a seven-day work schedule. So we have inspectors out all seven days of the week now, and the whole concept is to provide coverage on weekends. And we're able to do that again because they're able to work individually from their vehicles. And then we plan a neighborhood service training academy, and that's been tentatively scheduled for January twenty-one. And the whole concept there is to And the whole concept there is to train city staff, not just neighborhood services staff, but. Uh, other city staff as well to know what to look for and how to report it in terms of seeing problems within the community. And then uh, in terms of economic development, uh, Ms. Blakeman covered a number of these things. Uh, for example, the current grant round uh opened on the twenty-eighth. It closes when the dollars are gone or by November thirty, whichever happens first. And if you recall, you, you gave me the authority to be able to move some money around too. So if there's a significant, significant amount of demand, we'll be able to supplement what is there. Um, she talked about nonprofit grants, childcare grants, uh, that opens this coming Monday. And uh, like the business support grants, uh. It will close when the dollars are gone or by November thirty, whichever happens first. Uh, Parks Recreation Golf, uh, they had to adjust their operations so that they can keep the recreation centers open. Under the twenty-five percent capacity rule under the new health guidelines. Um, it, it will not significantly affect uh operations because we had a couple. Peak periods when there's uh heavier use, but otherwise uh normal. Operation has been under the twenty-five percent capacity uh anyway. So we're trying to spread those people out a little bit more in, instead of concentrating in the one peak area. So hopefully it does not uh drastically affect operations and people's schedules. When COVID nineteen started, uh, we went through a period of trying to assess what to do with our variable hour employees. Who weren't uh needed at that time. Eventually forty-six uh variable hour employees were furloughed, uh, and they continued to be on furlough. Now with the reduction in schedule and uh also going into the winter season. Uh, we will need to reduce hours for an additional one hundred and one variable hour employees. Now. Part of that is gonna be modified by this next item, and that is, I've asked uh Parks Recreation Golf. To work in cooperation with both Adams County and Tri-County Health to set up an ambassador program for the next month. Uh, using underemployed VHEs, variable hour employees to reach out to businesses and people using parks. About the importance of wearing masks, so we'll uh see how that goes. We'll be able to use uh CARES Act funding to, to uh pay for their wages during that time. Uh, this is something that has been piloted in Westminster and so we are unashamedly stealing the idea. Using it to our uh peoples, our residents' advantage as well. And then turning to uh Public Works, um, just a few things, uh, Vasquez Improvement. Uh, CDOT will be coming to you next Monday in the study session to give an update uh regarding that project. And they'll also give you a quick update about the E four, I'm sorry, the I two seventy uh project as well. Which is uh just getting underway in terms of public outreach and design. Uh, the pavement management flatwork, uh, all the flatwork is completed and the asphalt work is completed except for eighty-sixth Avenue. Where we have some drainings issues that uh they're trying to resolve before that paving occurs. And then on Brighton Road, uh, between Hundred and Fourth and Hundred and Twelfth, uh, that's a phased project. And uh, the road rehab and widening started last week. And uh, should be completed by the end of the year. Uh, and then the bridge replacement is the second phase and that's to occur in twenty twenty-one. Hundred and Twelfth Avenue, Chambers to Parkside, um, paving is completed, striping is complete. They are uh, uh. Electrifying, powering up the signal at Chambers and Hundred and Twelfth. And uh, it'll be in a flashing mode initially and uh, that will uh start basically on the sixth. Later on this week. And then they're waiting for delivery of the uh rapidly, rapid flashing beacons and that's expected by the end of the month, basically. Um, in terms of respect, Respect was hired to do a report. On the operation at the Municipal Service Center. And uh, that was from the perspective of drainage and uh. You know, looking at our operations and our facilities uh over the concern of uh improper materials. Getting into the uh retention, detention basin that's there at Municipal Service Center. And so we have a draft of the report, uh, staff has been reviewing that and developing an action plan. And they will review that with Respect as well later this week. And then uh, you know, in terms of normal operations, they're continuing to winterize vehicles and equipment. And uh, you know, still doing uh weed maintenance mowing as well as uh applying fertilizer. Uh, doing aeration operations and uh winterization of irrigation systems. So all of that normal work is continuing on in spite of uh COVID nineteen. So uh, we do have uh some exposure, uh, we had one or more employees that uh were. Uh, exposed to COVID nineteen and uh so we have uh between, it, it's varied by the day. But uh, between six and eight people quarantined, so that affects staffing levels to some extent as well. But all those normal operations have to continue uh being taken care of. So that concludes my report, we're happy to answer any questions if there are any.
House member Noel.
Thank you very much, Mister Tinklerberg, and I'm really excited to hear about some of the innovative programs that you have. Uh, coming in and especially appreciate your comments at the beginning about um taking masks. And social distancing and hand washing seriously if we really want to be able to help our businesses since we can't just keep throwing money at them. Because we won't have it, it's going back. Um, and also, I really want to apologize to you, Mister Tinklerberg, and also Ms. Blankman and. The mayor and council members, my understanding was that the council meeting began at six fifteen and I thought I was timing myself for that. And I misunderstood whether roll call had been taken, I had um oral surgery today. And am um rationing my time, so I will be here as uh long as I can. So I, I apologize for misunderstanding what had occurred, thank you.
Yeah, any other questions for staff regarding the COVID nineteen update? Seeing none, I did have one question regarding the benefits enrollment, if you're already enrolled in a plan, do you need to re-enroll?
Yes, sir, you do, this is an active uh enrollment.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, we'll move on to the next presentation of the evening, which is the Oil and Gas Monthly Update. And will Dominic Martinelli, environmental planner, please make the presentation?
Thank you, honorable mayor and council, uh, tonight I'll be giving the Oil and Gas Monthly Update. I'll go ahead and share my, it looks like screen sharing's uh disabled, if I can get that up, I'll go ahead and share my screen and uh start the presentation.
Yep, uh, try it again, Dominic.
All right, there we go.
Thank you.
Okay, um, looks like we're good to go here. So there has been some activity on the city oil and gas permit applications. Um, previously, we were at seven applications that had been deemed complete and were under review. Um, two of those permits were not resubmitted prior to the resuminal deadline on October twenty-first. So the city currently has five applications that it's currently processing, Pelican, Heron, Blue Jay, Owl and Falcon. Um, so two of the, the applications for the, um, I believe it's the Harlow and the Anater were withdrawn due to an activity. Um, so we'll go to the next slide here to take a look at the map, um, so you'll see now there's five current applications. Four of them are along the um E four seventy corridor with the Heron pad still being applied for. And then the Anater and the Harlow permits did lapse. Um, so the review schedule staff is, is processing those per our standard, we will be providing comments back to the applicant under a five-week seminal timeline. Um, there has been some activity at the state as well, uh, we had mentioned during the last month's update, that's three spacing unit applications have been withdrawn by operators. Two by Extraction and one by Great Western, and there was one two-way application that was removed since the last update. And I'll highlight those changes here on the next slide. So there were a number, you could see here in, in these two sections where my, my mouse cursor is, there were, there was one spacing location here. And then a number um generally along Ninety-Sixth Avenue, so you can kind of see this gap. Um, for where there's current spacing applications. And then there was one, basically the Owl pad um was withdrawn by Extraction and Gas, which was located generally around a Hundred and Twelfth and Tower. Um, some general updates, um, since we posted the agenda in this presentation, there is an update to um item number one. The Suncor um SEP RFA was released today. Um, it looks like that application is gonna be open until December thirty-first, twenty twenty at five P M. Um, so staff is currently reviewing the documents of, of that proposal and, and seeing what additional changes need to be made. And what types of applications will be moved forward. So, um, this was originally scheduled to be released in the October, um, they postponed it a little bit, but it looks like they'll be accepting applications up until. Um, December thirty-first. Uh, the recruitment for the environmental consulting services is ongoing, uh, the application period was open from the beginning of October. To closing on October thirtieth at five P M. Um, so we'll be reviewing those proposals and bringing for top application choices for councils interviews. Um, which tentatively we had scheduled for November twenty-third, but it looks like that'll be moving to the regular council meeting on December seventh. To make sure that there's enough time for some other items that were scheduled. Um, the city did receive six applications from um firms during that period. And we'll be reviewing and evaluating those proposals in the next coming weeks. Um, the city also did join as part of the local government coalition to the December Air Quality Control Commission rulemakings. Um, the state is taking up four simultaneous rulemakings, which have to do, number one, with um the state implementation plan. For um, for the serious ozone non-attainment area, um, regulation number three, regulation number seven. And air quality standards, design and emissions budgets, and a very, very brief kind of synopsis of what are being changed. So given that the Denver Metro Front Range is within serious non-attainment for the ADRO ozone standard. The state is required to provide um a revision to its state implementation plan to show how it plans to come into compliance. With the uh, the federal emissions guidelines. Uh, there's some additional regulations regarding the oil and gas sector, which includes Eldar and Nematix Regulations. Uh, a lot of the regulations that we, we have contained within our regional operator agreement on no bleed valves and, and. Basically looking for leak detection repair programs. And then they're looking at a revision air quality standards um for motor vehicle emission budgets and a number of other things of that nature. And these really all stem from the rulemakings that occurred for Senate Bill one eighty-one and House Bill nineteen twelve sixty-one. Which implemented a um, a timeline for um. CO or CO2 emission reductions um over um about a thirty-year period. Um, Commerce City is one of forty local governments in this coalition. And it has uh some significance to the, the greenhouse gas emission inventory that was requested as part of the Environmental Consultant. Um, RFP and a number of the, the efforts that have been contained within there. Uh, oil and gas LDC updates, um, so as Roger mentioned, there's a, a proposed schedule for bringing the LDC updates back to city council. With a planning commission date of Tuesday, January fifth. Um, city council first reading, um, brought back before you on Monday, February first. And then the second reading and adoption will be Monday, March first, um, we're willing to take any feedback or thoughts that you have on the schedule. And then just um, the financial assurances discussion occurred on October nineteenth. And given that, it, it's appropriate to move forward with um a schedule such as this or a revised schedule. Um, this is information from the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment on Suncor that occurred between um, since September fourteenth in the last update. So on October twenty-first, Suncor experienced a power outage on an internal transformer. And portions of plant one and plant three were offline for forty-eight hours for maintenance. And on September twenty-eighth, there were some issues on startup with various heaters and boilers with exceeding sulfide sulfide. Exceeding the one hundred and sixty-two parts per million uh three-hour average. And in addition to this, um, as part of the packet that was included for the monthly update, Suncor did provide a written update. And very briefly, I'm just going to pull this up on the screen here. And generally speaking, um, if you tuned into the October twenty-sixth study session, a lot of the information that they communicated in this, this report is, is similar to what was. Um, discussed during that meeting, um, they talk about the October twenty-first incident and exactly what occurred, what types of monitoring they did after that event. And then a brief discussion on some of their environmental performance data for this year and an overview of their current permanent parameters for um. Federal air emission guidelines. Um, and with that, staff is available to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions for staff regarding that Oil and Gas Monthly Update? Seeing none, thank you for your presentation, sir. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, the consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote, any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are thirteen items listed under the consent agenda, does anyone on council wish to remove an item off the consent agenda for further discussion? Council member Noel.
Thank you very much, um, also, I'm sorry, I lost my screen for a minute and I did have questions for. Uh, Mister Martinelli, so if he can't answer them now, I hope he will stay around and I can ask them uh later, please. Um, I would like to uh pull minutes twenty dash one six seven and minutes twenty dash one seven one.
Okay, we'll pull those off the consent agenda, is there anyone else on council that wishes to pull any items off the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as modified. Councilman Hurst.
Make, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified.
Council member Alan Thomas.
My second motion.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as modified, which is removing minutes twenty dash one six seven and minutes twenty dash one seven one. Is there any discussion? Council member Alan Thomas.
Oops, that's error, thank you.
Ain't no discussion, will the city clerk please read the titles and take a roll call vote?
Minutes of the May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty special meeting, minutes of the September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty special meeting. Minutes of the uh, October fifth, twenty twenty, minutes of the October twelfth, twenty twenty special meeting. And ordinance, ordinance two-two-nine-five and ordinance amending the Commerce City Sales and Use Tax Code, Article One of Chapter Twenty of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code. To exempt the pass-through of federal excise tax imposed on trucks, trailers and tractors from taxation. Ordinance two-two-nine-six and ordinance amending the twenty-twenty budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado. By the recognition of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Community Development Block Grant Funds. In the amount of four hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Ordinance two-two-nine-seven and ordinance amending the twenty-twenty budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado. By reaffirming certain prior appropriations for a total amount of one million, four hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-five cents. And authorizing the expenditures thereof. Ordinance two-two-nine-nine and ordinance amending the twenty-twenty budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado. By appropriating twenty-five thou, twenty-five thousand dollars from the general fund to cover initial expenses related to the RFP. For environmental consulting services and the authorization of the expenditure there, expenditure thereof. Resolution twenty twenty dash seventy-nine, resolution authorizing award of contract for installation of three emergency standby generators. For the mi, municipal services center complex to Colorado Electric and Power Systems Incorporated. Resolutions twenty twenty dash eight-six, resolution authorizing intergovernmental agreement with Mile High Flood District. City and County of Denver and Adams County regarding funding of major drainage way, planning and flood hazard area delineation for Second Creek tributaries. And resolution twenty twenty dash eight-seven, resolution authorizing and ratifying renewals of. And resolution twenty twenty dash eight seven, resolution authorizing and ratifying renewals of professional services agreement with Eid Bailey LLP for audit services. Council member Madera.
Yes.
Council member Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Council member Noble.
Yes.
Council member Wardiola.
Yes.
Council member Hurst.
Yes.
Council member Grimes.
Yes.
Council member Smith.
Yes.
Counts our mayor pro tem Frank.
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Noel, you requested to per remove minutes twenty dash one six seven. The floor is yours.
Um minutes twenty dash one six seven is actually minutes of a study session rather than uh a regular meeting, the study session of July twenty first as opposed to September twenty first.
I will get those corrected. Thank you, Councilmember Noble.
Yes, thank you. And on the minutes of October nineteenth twenty twenty, um it makes notes note that the financial assurances was brought forward. But it doesn't make any mention of uh the fact that there were no objections to it. And I think that that would be useful. I will save a comment for later on in the meeting, if I may get that far regarding minutes for special meetings, but um I do believe that it should at least include that there were no objections to the financial assurances that Mr. Sheasley presented.
Thank you. So to your first point regarding minutes twenty dash one six seven, I've gone into Granicus and pulled the minutes, and it does show that it is for meeting minutes for city council meeting, Monday, September twenty first twenty twenty.
And it must have been corrected since I looked at it. Thank you very much for pointing that out, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So I'm looking for a motion in a second to approve minutes twenty dash one six seven.
The problem is, we haven't read them since they're new.
Mister Gibson, do you know when those were updated?
Um as far as I know, I published them all at the same time. I would have to go in the system and see if there's any history to those items. My recollection was they were published at the same time as the rest of the agenda. Um but I I wouldn't put my uh life on the line for that claim either right now.
All right. So I'm either looking for a motion any second to approve minutes twenty dash one six seven or a motion in a second to continue minutes twenty dash one six seven. Councilmember Noble. Councilmember Noble.
I'd like to make a motion to continue minutes twenty dash one six seven.
Councilmember Madera.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to continue minutes twenty dash one six seven. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vocal vote.
Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Frank.
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. And at this time, I'm looking for a motion in a second on how to deal with minutes twenty dash one seven one. Councilmember Noble.
I move to include the language that there were no objections to the financial assurances presented by Mr. Sheasley.
Have a motion to includes that include that language. Councilmember Alan Thomas.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion in a second to include language that there were no objections to the financial assurance and assurances presentation given by City Attorney Sheasley. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Noble.
No objection. My hand is stuck.
Councilmember Hurst.
Do we take a vote? Because I'm not sure that represents exactly the discussion. There was discussion about dissension in the exact amounts. There's discussion and dissension about the length of time. Um so I I I'm not sure I remember it exactly as none. We didn't take a vote, though. So I'm not sure how we could say there was no objections because uh I know that we got to five, but I know that there was objections.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Sheasley.
Sure. As I recall, this was just the discussion about whether and to include the particular language in the draft that was going to come forward to council um and not actually acting on it. So um I do believe the the statement is accurate as far as it goes to. Um that was the direction that staff took was to include that, and I I do not recall there being objection, but that is my recollection.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst.
No.
Councilmember Grimes.
No.
Councilmember Smith.
No.
Uh Mayor Pro Tem Frank.
No.
Mayor Hughesman.
No.
Motion fails uh for I and five nay.
Thank you. This time I'm looking for a motion or in a second to either approve or continue minutes twenty dash one seven one. Councilmember Madera.
Move to approve council minutes uh twenty dash one seven one.
Thank you. Councilmember Grimes.
Second the motion.
Have a motion in a second to approve minutes twenty dash one seven one. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
No.
Councilmember Noble.
No.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Frank.
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Passes seven to two.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, public hearings. The first public hearing is resolution two zero two zero dash two seven, which is for adopting the twenty twenty one budget and providing for the twenty twenty tax levy. Tonight's first public hearing was continued from October nineteenth. This time I will reopen the public hearing and ask if anyone on council has any questions for staff. Seeing none. Mister clerk, has anyone registered to speak on this matter or provided written comments?
Mayor Hughesman, no members of the public registered to speak on this item by the deadline, and no written comments were received by the deadline either.
Thank you. At this time, I will close the public hearing. We'll ask for a motion in a second to adopt resolution two zero two zero dash two seven. Mayor Pro Tem.
Motion to adopt resolution two zero two zero dash dash two seven.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion in a second to adopt a resolution two zero two zero dash two seven. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the city clerk please read the title and take a roll call vote?
Resolution two zero dash or two zero two zero dash two seven, resolution adopting the budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado for the year twenty twenty one and providing for twenty twenty Commerce City tax levy. Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Frank.
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Next public hearing is for conditional use permit one two three dash two zero for Metro Wastewater Reclamation District Pipeline Project. Tonight's second public hearing was continued from September twenty first. I will remind council to use the public hearing only to ask questions, but not to express opinions or indicate how you will vote. Council members are not to provide testimony if you wish to participate in the decision. Also rely only on facts developed in this hearing in the record and apply those facts to the criteria in the land development code. This time I'm going to reopen the public hearing unless there is an objection from council, the public will present before staff in this matter. Are there any objections? Seeing none. Well. Jenny Oxmacher, principal planner, please introduce the applicants and the applicants to make their presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of council. This evening, Metro Wastewater District will have a brief presentation about their negotiations with Franco regarding this conditional use permit. Um I would like to ask Dylan to allow Miles Graham to share his screen for the presentation. And to allow for the district manager, Mickey Conway, to present. Dylan, I believe you'll find him listed as William Conway.
Alrighty, both Miles and Mickey Conway have been promoted to panelists and are able to share their screens.
Thank you, Dylan. And I think we also have Jim Mallory um from the project team and Abel Moreno, who are presenting tonight as well.
Okay, I've got Jim Mallory over and Abel over, so they are all panelists now. If there's anybody else, please let me know. Otherwise, you guys have uh control.
Thanks, Dylan. Mickey, do we have you on?
Yes, I'm on. Can you hear me?
We've got you.
Okay, great. I want to thank uh the mayor and council for uh having us this evening. We are seeking uh approvals for our Second Creek Pipeline uh that uh is running uh along the east and northern side of town. And uh I want to talk a little bit about uh our negotiations with Franco, which have been concluded successfully. Uh give you a good idea about how this is going to provide local service to the citizens of Commerce City and our member South Adams County Water and Sand District. And the folks from the project team will give you a little more detail on the technical aspects of the project, uh including some questions that came up in the last presentation. So uh really, again, thank you for your time this evening. We're we're ready to present here. So let's move on. The first update, uh questions that came up on our negotiations with Franco, as you may recall from the previous meeting, there were some questions about an agreement that needed to be reached uh to cross the O'Brien Canal. We have re- reached a full agreement with Franco to do so, address all the safety concerns that Franco uh had uh regarding that, and really reached a beneficial uh agreement that allows us to open cut the canal. There will be no tunneling. And we can do that uh at uh with safety uh better uh Franco's safety requirements and our safety requirements, both of which are very stringent. And so we feel uh very positive about this, and we appreciate the ability to work with Franco and have that resolved. So that uh that crossing has been resolved. And uh the litigation that was associated with it has been dismissed. So we're moving forward on that. We're pleased to report that. So I just wanted to give, before I turn over the technical team, uh just a very quick uh update on on who we are here at Metro Wastewater Reclamation District. We are uh we are serving your citizens and that uh something we're very proud to do and and something that uh uh I think we all need to understand. We are the the largest uh wastewater reclamation district uh treatment facility in the Rocky Mountain West, about two million citizens, which will include folks here in Commerce City. One of our members, of course, South Adams. Uh we have two treatment plants, the Robert Height Facility in Commerce City, which is a large facility, one of the largest in the country. And the northern treatment plant up in Brighton, which is where this infrastructure, which will serve this part of town and, you know, moving north will uh transport this uh wastewater and uh our, we are a regional wastewater provider. We are a mountain nation of governments and citizens here in in the uh metro area. Sixty local governments. Our members include, as I said, South Adams, which serves Commerce City. We serve two million people in this area, and we were formed in nineteen sixty one uh by a group of uh uh governments who thought you doing this is a regional effort together makes a lot more sense than doing it separately. And it's proved to be true over the years. We've managed to uh clean up the Platte River quite a bit. We've managed to manage uh to tackle the issues associated with wastewater and wastewater treatment, and we've done it by sharing costs regionally, which is exactly what we propose to do here. Um so if we move to the next slide, Miles. Um this is really a local wastewater uh transmission service. It'll benefit Commerce City, the growth here in Commerce City. It'll benefit South Adams County, and it's being paid for by all of the members of the metro district. So there are folks on the west side of town, the south side of town, uh nor other, you know, northwestern side of town that are not directly benefiting from this infrastructure. But our principally, our founding principle is that uh the right infrastructure projects for the region should be shared by the region. And so this infrastructure is being shared in cost by all of those uh folks. Um you know, even though the growth in those areas or the citizens in those areas may not directly tie into this infrastructure, they are helping to pay for that. And that's that's how we operate. We've been very successful doing that, and we've, you know, increased public health in the area as as a part of that. So uh I I just, before I turn it over to Jim Mallory, I I just want to just again say thank you for the opportunity to serve your citizens. Thank you for the opportunity to provide uh infrastructure here at a regionally uh paid for cost. It's going to benefit everybody in the area. Um you know, I really if uh if the project is approved, we're able to move forward with something that's going to be cost effective, safe, and really uh help us build out into the future fifty, a hundred years. And that's really what we're looking to do here at Metro Wastewater. I'm happy to answer questions after the presentation if if they come up. And at this point, I'll turn this over to Jim Mallory. He's our Metro Wastewater uh Transmission Division Head in the Engineering Department. Jim?
Thank you, Mickey. Uh the graphic that you're seeing on the screen is represents about forty years of regional system planning that has led up to this project that we've brought to you tonight. On the far left, there's there's a cover or report, a report cover from August nineteen seventy seven. At first envisioned a regional wastewater treatment plant to serve the northern and northeastern communities of the metro area. In nineteen eighty two, Dr. Cog identified a regional facility in that area. And so that that vision was vetted several times through planning efforts until in January two thousand eight, the district established that that facility would now be the northern treatment plant in the district's planning efforts. The northern treatment plant then continued on in our two thousand eight facility plan in March two thousand eight. And then based on those efforts and the vision of the northern treatment plant, the city of Brighton and the South Adams County Water and Sanitation District became members of the metro district in two thousand nine. And then they they participated from that point on as members of the metro district. Continuing through our wastewater utility plan, you'll see in August twenty ten, was the framework in the plan for the northern treatment plant, the South Platte Interceptor and the Second Creek Interceptor. Those facilities continued in our twenty thirteen planning until ultimately. And then in twenty sixteen, the northern treatment plant and the South Platte Interceptor construction were completed and put into operation. So since twenty sixteen, those facilities have been standing ready and have been designed and constructed to receive this flow from the Second Creek Interceptor. In June twenty seventeen, the district completed and adopted the regional master plan, which I'll go into on the next slide. So the regional master plan was a collaborative effort among the members of the district, including Commerce City's wastewater provider, which is the South Adams County Water and Sand Sanitation District, a member of the district. It identified this Second Creek Interceptor as the long term solution for cost effective service in northern and northeastern communities of the metro area, including Commerce City. As Mickey mentioned, being a regional project, it'll spread those costs among the sixty district members. And it directly then benefits Commerce City. It ultimately avoids a parallel interceptor being independently built and paid for by South Adams County, which would ultimately affect C three rates directly. And some of you may know that Commerce City is a member of the Adams County Water Quality Association, along with the city of Brighton, Adams County and the South Adams County Water and Sanitation District. The project team presented to the association in October of twenty nineteen. And the Adams County Water Quality Association supported this project. Supported this project. And signed the district site application. For approval in October of twenty nineteen. So Aqua has been in support and favor of this project. In the next slides, Abel is going to go through how this project aligns. With the master planning of the South Adams County Water and Sanitation District.
Thank you, Jim, for the segue. To how the Second Creek Regional Interceptor benefits South Adams County Water. And Sanitation District, and more specifically, the citizens of Commerce City. As Jim mentioned, my name's Abel Moreno, I'm the Distribution and Collection Systems Manager for South Adams County. Our municipal partnership with both the city and metro. Is extremely vital to the success of delivering safe and economical wastewater service to our common customers. This is the third city meeting that I've participated in regarding this conditional use permit. In the prior two meetings, it has been suggested as part of public comment that the pipeline be routed down a utility corridor. That follows E-four seventy. And I wanted to reemphasize that the Second Creek Corridor is really the best option for the city. And I'll talk a little bit more about that, but what you'll see here in the graphic over the next several slides. Is actually a graphic from the district's. Master plan for the sewer system. Miles, can you hit the next bullet? Thank you, uh. So gravity really serves our industry really better than anything else, anytime you have mechanical equipment. It's prone to fail, certainly not intentionally, but pumps clog, get clogged up, uh. Motors go out. Anytime that happens, we have to have a, a response to that, and a lot of times. The detention time that we have. Isn't enough to safely ensure that we can't cause an economical or an environmental or homeowner uh, issue. The next bullet, please. So if we were to run the. This pipeline down Third Creek, and just to give you a little bit of a description of this graphic here. You'll see essentially three drainage basins in this corridor. You'll see the label there where it talks about Second Creek. That's the proposed alignment that this project is looking to go down. The middle one is the reunion basin, which is really on the west side of E-four seventy. And the east side of that other dash blue line, just on the east of Second Creek, and then the third one is east of E-four seventy. And that's all Third Creek. You'll see that it's all red because none of that infrastructure is currently in place, but all of those lines. That are in red and green, the green, of course, is in service today. The red is not, that's going to come over time as the city continues to develop in that corridor. But if. The recommendation is to push the regional interceptor to the Third Creek Corridor. It will require a lift station to lift the sewage to get it back to the South Platte. River, which is what is tributary to this drainage basin that we're talking about here this evening. Next bullet. In addition, uh, as part of that future planned infrastructure, there's a Nob Hill Lift Station that's just east of the Republic Services landfill. That is intended to go up Third Creek. It is possible that we're able to negotiate an alignment that goes. Through maybe some parts of Denver, through the BFI landfill and gets it back to the Second Creek. Corridor, which would eliminate the need for that future lift station. Next slide. So the purpose that I play here tonight is again to just reemphasize the importance and. The long-term vitality of the district's infrastructure, which serves the Commerce City community. It's going to be an economic benefit for cost, uh, Commerce City customers. Uh, by not pushing it further to the east. And frankly, as Jim mentioned, we're not going to need a second redundant parallel interceptor in the future. Uh, because this line provides the additional benefit that we need and the capacity that we need. In fact, Nexus North, which is at about eighty-eighth and Tower Road. Uh, has a need to tie into our Second Creek Interceptor that would have to cross Second Creek. And there's not enough cover to go over that line uh, beneath the creek bed. By Metro bringing their line in here on the west side of Second Creek, it allows us to have adequate depth. Uh, to prevent any type of freezing from happening in that regard. And so again, we're, we're happy to participate, our relationship with both the city and metro is extremely important. And I am hopeful that this information is helpful for you all as you make your decision. I'll turn it back over to Miles now for, to close out the project.
Thanks Abel, and just to wrap this up here, when we're designing a project like this, we're always looking at how can we. In addition to providing essential infrastructure, support the overarching vision that Commerce City has for the future. And in doing that, as we were planning and designing the Second Creek Pipeline, we were looking at the Commerce City Comprehensive Plan. And the three Cs of sustainability with commerce and context and community. And thinking about how this project can do more to support the community. And support that existing and planned development that will, will drive the economic future of Commerce City. And also looking at the environment and how we can be stewards of the Second Creek open, open space. And actually create opportunities for community and social well-being through the, the designing construction of this project, and. You're probably wondering, that all sounds good, but how do you actually do that in real life? And in addition to providing that cost-effective, long-term service that Mickey and Jim and Abel have just been, been discussing. What we're doing is looking at the, the design of the project in certain areas where it can actually create about four miles of new. Gravel access roads that are designed to Commerce City Trail standards and. Those routes for those new access roads with the Commerce City Trail Standard Design actually complement the routes identified in the. Commerce City Trail System Master Plan, and specifically to point out, one, one example is. In the, the community here that's illustrated, bringing the neighborhood connection point. Closer to the Bison Ridge Recreation Center, where we're looking to. Provide those other community benefits that go above and beyond just um, essential infrastructure and, and providing wastewater service that, that will fuel the future economic growth of Commerce City. Um, and certainly stewardship is a critical component to that, and looking at how. The lands and any disturbances are restored to existing conditions or finding opportunities to improve them. And leave land conditions better than we found them, so with that. Jenny, would you like us to answer questions now or wait until after staff's presentation?
Miles, I will defer to the mayor as to whether he'd like me to proceed with my presentation or. Have questions.
Thank you, does anyone on council have any questions for the applicants at this time? Seeing none, Ms. Oxmacher, would you please continue?
All right, hopefully everyone can see my screen. This will be a brief presentation, we're going to cover both C one, two, three, and then. Twenty twenty dash seventy-eight, that's the accompanying IGA that also concerns the Second Creek Interceptor. So council voted to continue this case back on September twenty-first, and so we're here tonight. With the agreement that the district and Freco have reached. To perform the crossing of the O'Brien Canal and the Little Burlington Ditch via open cut now. And that was what was requested by Freco at the previous council hearing. The revised construction method from tunneling to open cut will now result in two closures of East one hundred and twelfth Avenue. Detours will be provided, provided. Um, and our Public Works Department is comfortable with those closures. The extended construction hours is also a change proposed from the nine twenty-one presentation. They have a very limited timeframe for construction around the canal, and so they are requesting the ability to construct. Uh, for twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week for just a narrow six-week time period. Staff is supportive of this revised application. The area of construction for the canal is largely undeveloped with approximately a quarter mile to the nearest uh. Developed property. And these revisions did not result in any major, major changes to the proposed conditions, the only change is the resubmital date of October twenty-twenty was added to condition A. So back on August fourth, Planning Commission voted five to zero to recommend approval to the city council for this conditional use permit, subject to conditions. Since the Planning Commission staff worked with the city attorney's office to clarify some of those conditions. And the conditions generally deal with approval permits, obtaining easements and property rights, parks and trails. Mitigation for construction activities, noise dust hazard, hazardous materials, and notifying the city of any changes. As for Resolution twenty twenty dash seventy-eight, that is the corresponding intergovernmental agreement to deal with what is known as ten forty-one regulations. The proposed IGA defers um, to the city's conditional use permit as the primary regulatory process and waives the ten forty-one permit requirement. It supplements the CUP as to enhance project benefits and minimize impacts. And provides a basis for future easements licenses on city properties for the Interceptor. There was a change to the IGA also, since it was presented back on September twenty-first. The IGA will now allow for temporary closures of one hundred and twelfth Avenue. Eighty-eighth Avenue and a land reduction at eighty-first Avenue. With that, staff is happy to answer any questions, and then the applicant is still present to answer questions.
Pro Tim.
So I, I, on the construction activity, it looks like there's going to be some. Bulldozer, loader, jackhammer type activity. Um. That's not something that's going to be happening at night, is that right? Like, since this is twenty-four hours a day?
The city's noise ordinances would still be in effect, they have not requested any waivers for noise.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Noble.
Uh, first of all, thank you very much for working out an agreement with Freco, uh, that, that came as good news. I am curious about a couple of things, given that um, we have unusual water here. Where our water resources are water sources, that is. What steps are being taken to ensure that this uh, pipe does not disrupt any of our uh, water sources such as groundwater and so forth? It's.
It's my understanding that the construction practices used are. Constructed in, in a manner that will protect all the groundwater resources, I believe the applicant can give you more specifics to those construction methods. But it's our understanding that they will have no impacts to the surrounding groundwater.
Thanks Jenny, and, and uh, I think we've got two folks on, on the team tonight who can answer that question and, and. Abe, but because you have a, a pipeline running through that same corridor now, you're very familiar with the existing conditions, and Jim. Um, I believe you have the, the best insight into the design, so um, I'll defer to, to those two to, to respond to that question.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take the uh. The new pipe, so the new pipe materials and installation are designed such that it will protect you from impacting the, the ground waters along the alignment. And I would add that Abel maybe speak to the, the existing system that's presently there in similar alignment.
Thank you, and my second question is that it's my understanding that um, this pipe will carry produced. Will carry produced water from uh, the Aurora area through Commerce City. Um, is that correct? I learned that from uh, South Adams County Water and Sanitation District, by the way.
I believe that's correct, but Abel, can you clarify?
Yes Jenny, that, that is correct. Uh, the connectors to this pipeline are Aurora. Uh, Denver International Airport. Brighton, South Adams County Water.
The distinction I was making is that it was carrying produced water, which in layperson's terms is fracked water. From the oil and gas projects in Aurora.
So I'm sorry, I can't answer that question, Jim, do you know?
Yeah, so no, it is not carrying. It's just carrying domestic wastewater. From all the entities participating.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for staff or the applicant? Mr. Gibson, is anyone registered to speak on this matter?
Mayor Hughesman, no members of the public registered to speak on this item, and no written comments were received by the deadline.
Thank you. Um, would the applicant wish to provide any rebuttal testimony? Mr. Tinklinburg.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, I believe at the last meeting, there were several questions that were raised uh, regarding the feasibility of. Moving the pipeline to the E-four seventy utility quarter, uh, quarter, sorry. Um, and I believe those questions have not been answered, so uh, with your permission, I'd like to. Restate a couple of the questions.
Please do.
One of the questions is, is that technically feasible? And my understanding is that while it's possible, financially it's not feasible, would you care to comment on that, please?
And from a design, design standpoint, Abel, I think your illustrations I'd be happy to share on screen again on, on the feasibility. Versus the trade-offs with, with the pumping, if, if you'd like, I can uh, share my screen again.
Jennifer. Wow. Nothing.
Mike, huh, Mike? And Jim, I don't know if you want to chime in here, but um, basically the, the elements of the, the Second Creek design is. As Abel talked about with experience, having a, a, a pipeline in the Second Creek Utility Corridor already. Um, the, the drainage basins would require a significant amount of pumping to. Um, pressurize a pipe and pump it into the Third Creek Basin along the E-four seventy utility corridor and. Um, Abel, I'll let you speak to the specifics of that, but there are certainly um, cost implications for. The district for South Adams County and for Commerce City as a member, and there's also safety. When you're piping that much um, water or piping that much anything through a pressurized pipeline.
Thanks, Mile, Miles. Uh, if, I don't know if you can highlight the two lift stations that are up there on the top of the graphic. And so to answer your question, Mr. Tinklinburg, one of the. Challenges that putting the infrastructure in the Third Creek. Uh, there certainly are some economics, because I, any, again, anytime you have to build a lift station to lift sewage to get back to gravity. Uh, it becomes a challenge, and there's that future Cutler Lift Station that we demonstrate right there. Uh, that is in full red, and then there's the one with the blue inside the circle. That's an existing lift station three. And the reason that there are lift stations there, because those are going back to the district's lift station number two, which is at one hundred and twentieth in Brighton. The only way that it flows by gravity is to take a long route through Brighton. To get back to the connection point at about one hundred and thirty-sixth and E-four seventy. And so it, it does involve a lot of dollars to construct that. But I think more importantly is the potential environmental and social impact that. Sewage backups have on the community. Uh, anytime we at the district have had, had a failure of. Sewage, it's typically come from our lift stations, and that's because we've had clogged pumps that. Uh, stopped working, the wet well exceeds and starts to flood out. So we believe that although it's possible to push the alignment to the Third Creek Corridor. It is really more sensible to keep it in the Second Creek Corridor where it flows by gravity. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, uh, as a follow-up, then uh, there's a financial implication for businesses and residents in Commerce City, is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yes, uh, in fact, the, the district is undergoing a connection fee study at this moment in time. And by building this regional interceptor down the Second Creek Corridor. Uh, it is very possible that the wastewater connection fees decrease as a result. Because we do not have to build that secondary. Uh, interceptor that we previously talked about. In addition to that, if lift stations have to be built, then of course those dollars get passed on to all of the customers like Mr. Conway had indicated.
So in summary, then, there's an environmental benefit, there's a financial benefit. And uh. There's also a, a sociological benefit, I heard you say, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, one last time, are there any other questions for the applicant or for staff on this before I close the public hearing, Councilmember Noble?
So I'm, I just wanted you to clarify where the two. So I'm, I just wanted you to clarify where the two plants are actually located, there are two. Where are they located? The existing plants right now, one's in Commerce City, you said, and one is in Brighton.
And Jim, do you wanna take that one?
So the Robert W. Height Treatment Facility in Commerce City is located at the confluence of Sand Creek and the South Platte River. On York Street at approximately sixty-fourth Avenue. And the Northern Treatment Plant is located in the city of Brighton at roughly a hundred and sixty-eighth Avenue and Santa Fe or Highway eighty-four, eighty-five.
And what is the thinking for not going to the one at uh Sand Creek and. The Platte River as opposed to going through residential areas of Commerce City to get to Brighton?
Because we would have to pump that in, in the Denver region in the South Platte River, everything flows by gravity north. So it's generally the gravity flow that makes it sensible to send it to the Northern Treatment Plant.
And Councilwoman Noble, I think in, in summary, it's a, a great question too, and, and the Northern Treatment Plant was designed and, and planned over decades of. Of regional planning to serve the northern communities and certain, including Commerce City, so. Um, just due to that gravity flow, that was the intent and the design of locating. That Northern Treatment Plant on the northern side, so we could serve cities like Commerce City, Adams County and, and Brighton.
That, that part I understand, I'm just curious how we wind up with Aurora and Denver's affluent.
And Jim, maybe you can add a little context on sort of the, the quantity versus um, you know, what's gonna be supplied in, in this. I'm going to the Northern Treatment Plant from the northern communities versus um the amounts coming from Aurora and Denver, the bulk of which are treated at the. The southern facility, the height facility that Jim described.
Sure, thanks, Miles. So the, the, the way the second creek basin and the sand creek basins divide. A very small portion of the city and county of Denver, it's their, their gateway lift station roughly at Tower. Road and Penny Boulevard is gonna be decommissioned, so the flow from Denver will essentially be their Tower Road. Uh, area flow and their Den real estate along, along Penny Boulevard. The act, the flow from DIA, which includes the de-icing fluids and whatnot, will still come to the Robert W. Height Treatment Facility. Those flows will not go to the Northern Treatment Plant. So a small amount of Denver and then Aurora, it's basically the Aurora municipality. Area north of I seventy corridor. The, the city of Aurora south, that's, that's approximately the, the dividing line. South of I seventy will continue to flow to the height facility at York in Commerce City. And north of I seventy, city of Aurora flow will flow to the Northern Treatment Plant. So they're very small percentages in the overall picture of the Denver and Aurora flow.
Thank you very much. Do you plan to build these plants in uh south, in the south part of the metro area as well?
The, these are all the plants that we have planned at this time that are currently constructed. That meet the needs for the district in our, in our forty-year planning period.
Councilman Noble, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions before we close the public hearing? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. This time I'm looking for a motion in a second to accept the findings and recommendations of the planning commission. In case CU dash one-two-three dash two-zero. Mayor Proten?
Uh, I motion to accept the findings and recommendations of the planning commission in case number CU dash one-two-three dash two-zero.
Councilmember Grimes?
Second to motion.
Have a motion in a second to accept the findings and recommendations of the planning commission in case CU dash one-two-three dash two-zero. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the city clerk please take a roll call?
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
No.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes eight to one.
Thank you. This time I'm looking for a motion in second to approve conditional use permit one-two-three dash two-zero with the conditions outlined, starting on page twenty-four of the staff report. Mayor Proten?
Motion to approve the conditional use permit one-two-three dash two-zero with the conditions outlined, starting on page twenty-four of the staff report.
Councilmember Madera?
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve conditional use permit one-two-three dash two-zero with conditions outlined, starting on page twenty-four of the staff report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is CU one-twenty-seven dash two-zero and CU one-twenty-eight dash two-zero for the Monroe Street Partners West Recycling Facility. Tonight's third and fourth public hearing will be heard concurrently. I'll remind council to use the public hearing only to ask questions, but not to express opinions or indicate how you will vote. Councilmembers not to provide testimony if you wish to participate in the decision. Also rely only on facts developed in this hearing and in the record and apply those facts to the criteria in the land development code. This time I will open the public hearing and invite Jenny Oxmacher, principal planner, to make the presentation.
So this is Dominic, I'll actually be conducting the presentation for a conditional use permit one-twenty-seven and one-twenty-eight. Before we jump into that though, um, Ms. Noble, I, I, I realize that you had a question that wasn't answered during the oil and gas update. Um, wanted to let you know that I'm gonna hang around until administrative council business and if there's any other questions that. Come up on the oil and, well, and gas month, the update, I'll be available to answer those.
You're very kind, thank you.
Um, so I'll go ahead and share my screen here. And uh, just as a, an order of procedure, um, the presentation as the staff presentation, as well as the applicant presentation. Will be conducted jointly for CU one-twenty-seven and CU one-twenty-eight. Um, I believe there'll have to be separate motions on that. Um, but the request here that we have tonight is for two conditional use permits. One is for a metals recycling facility and one is for a construction debris recycling and solid waste transfer facility. Um, the applicant is Monroe Street Partners West and Monroe Street Partners East. And this is at the facility located at fifty-four hundred Monroe Street. Um, so the subject property you'll see here in the map shows um that this property is directly on the border between the um city and county of Denver and Commerce City. Um, it's surrounded on all sides by I-three industrial properties and is in one of the most heavily intense industrial districts in the. In the, the city. Um, there are a number of uh constraints regarding public improvements and, and things regarding the city and county of Denver and um city of Commerce City, but you can. Generally see the, the industrial nature of the area um in this aerial image. Um, so the property is currently addressed at fifty-four hundred Monroe Street, um, this address will change, um, and we'll get into that in a little bit later. It's currently zoned I-three, it's roughly a ten-acre parcel and it fronts along east fifty-fourth Avenue. Um, it's currently used for a variety of outdoor storage and um kind of vacant uses. And the future land use plan calls it out for general industrial, um, as you can see here, and the same land use designation is generally considered for the majority of the properties in the area. As well as the, the city and county of Denver's land use plan. Um, so there's a little bit of site history with this property, so it was annexed in conjunction with the original city limit boundaries. At the time that Commerce City um incorporated as a municipality from Commerce Town to Commerce City in nineteen sixty-two. Uh, it was originally developed by the Woodbury Chemical Company, which operated a pesticide formulation facility. Which was actually designated on the EPA's uh Superfund Site List. And placed on the National Priority List in nineteen thirty-eight, nineteen eighty-three due to a high prevalence of pesticides and metals in the soil. Uh, there was significant remediation that occurred to remove that contamination and it was delisted from the National Priority List in nineteen ninety-three. Um, due to this history and, and a number of the environmental concerns around it, it's remained mostly vacant until two thousand and seven. And since then, it's been used for a variety of salvage and outdoor storage uses. Um, so you'll see aerial imagery, um, the majority of the west half of the property is, is vacant use. And the eastern side of it is, is used for a number of outdoor storage uses. Uh, so the applicant is requesting two conditional use permits. Um, they're essentially planning to split the property in half, a west side and an east side. On the west side will be a metals recycling facility and the east side will be a construction debris recycling and solid waste transfer facility. Um, they're up, they're requesting two separate CUPs because it's essentially two separate L, LLCs and two different operations under two proposed ownerships. Um, so as part of this request, staff is also pro, processing administrative subdivision, which would split the property into two separate parcels. Um, between the two properties, the applicant is proposing over fifty thousand square feet of various facilities. And they'll be complying with all the requirements in the land development code for Article seven design standards. Which generally include dust-free concrete servicing, landscaping, fention, or fencing, detention ponds and all of that. Um, so to break it down a little bit more, um, I gotta have a color-coded graphic here to show um lot one versus lot two. Um, lot one is about close to six acres, lot two is about three and a half acres. You'll see the two proposed separate addresses for each lot. And then their compliance with a very, with varying, varying standards with the land development code. And between the two facilities will be bringing about roughly eighty jobs. Uh, the applicant is also requesting the approval of a minor modification uh to reduce their landscaping reduct, or the landscaping buffer a minimum. Fence setback from twenty to sixteen feet. Um, that's being processed administratively by staff. And we'll continue on from there. So a little bit zoomed in on the proposed operations for the west facility, um, this is a graphic just uh to provide a little bit of context, it's not the full site plan. Um, but there's gonna be a seven, roughly a seventy-five hundred square foot non-ferris metal storage building. And a seventy-two hundred square foot office and maintenance facility. Um, the way that they organize their operations for the metal recycling is based on ferris and non-ferris metals. Um, but basically what that means is, is ferris metals are anything that contains iron. And non-ferris metals uh do not contain iron and have different sorting categories and, and the way that they're organized, there's, there's different operations associated with it. And they're processed and, and um sold in different ways. Um, so the metals would be sorted by classification, the non-ferris metals would be placed within the building. And materials and the waste would be shot or shipped via truck or rail. And then there would be a shredder located on the west half of lot one, and then there's a proposed outdoor storage area for um the ferris metals. Going to the east side of the facility, it's going to primarily contain a nineteen thousand square foot transfer facility. As well as a three, sixty-three hundred square foot office and maintenance facility, and then a future phase would include a um construction debris recycling facility. And all the sorting operations would occur within the transfer facility, so this will be a building that's enclosed on all four sides. Um, large shipments and, and customer shipments would come in, come in and all of that would be sorted through the transfer facility. And then materials that can be recycled will be transferred via rail spur or truck. And then the facility would begin to extract, accepting construction debris upon the construction of an additional phase. Um, there are a number of environmental benefits associated with these uses. Um, metal recycling in general reduces the amount of harmful materials that are diverted to landfills, um, there's some. Issues with waste diversion rates in, in the Denver metro area and being able to pull um reusable and recyclable metal from waste streams. So these types of facilities help improve that and, and reduce the, the metal that can be used otherwise and, and other operations and other businesses. Um, it reduces greenhouse gas emissions and uses less energy than making metal from virgin ore. And this is actually the way that about sixty percent of the um. Um, iron and steel is manufactured in the US as mostly through recycled metals. And it requires generally sixty percent less energy and fifty percent less carbon emissions than producing from iron ore. Um, for construction and debris demolition, um, there isn't actually a facility in the Denver metro area that's equipped to process construction demolition debris currently. Uh, but if this first phase is constructed, it would be the first facility in the Denver metro area to do so. Um, construction and demolition debris is often diverted to landfills because there are any facilities to really process them. Um, in twenty seventeen, five hundred and sixty-nine million tons of CND, CND debris were generated in the US. Which more than doubles solid municipal waste. And components like doors, hardware, appliances, fixtures, wood, concrete and other masonry are discarded from. Um, historic buildings or other construction sites where they could potentially be repurposed and reused in new construction. And it creates a locally sourced supply of, supply of construction materials with a lower carbon footprint. Offsets the environmental impact associated with extraction and consumption of um virgin resources and conserves landfill space. Um, so this is a little bit of a complicated graphic, but I wanna walk you through it to really explain what's going on in terms of public improvements. In the site, so fifty-fourth street is the right-of-way that's currently serving this property. It's half in the city of Denver and half in the city of Commerce City. Um, so because of that, it's only built out on the half side or half of the right-of-way is only built out on the Denver side on fifty-fourth. And then only the north side is built out on Commerce City on the west side. Um, it doesn't currently go through, there's a gap between Cook Street and Monroe Street. Um, so what's going on with this development? Is they're dedicating the north half on the east side via plat. And will be constructing the other half of the right-of-way that doesn't currently exist. And then they'll be expanding the right-of-way along fifty-fourth street and then be providing cash and lieu. Through their public improvements agreement at the time that is determined that fifty-fourth street would extend all the way through to both sides. Um, the planning commission did review this case and found that it's proposed, the proposed use is compliant with the comprehensive plan of the land development code. Um, the applicant has just demonstrated a significant community need for recycling of such items in the Denver metro area. Um, the site layout and the location is appropriate for the use. Um, they proposed a number of development standards and landscape buffer and metal fencing to screen any outdoor operations or storage. Um, and then there were no objections from any of the referral entities that refer on the case. Um, the conditional use permit approval criteria are, are generally listed here in terms of. Um, in order for being able to approve a conditional use permit, showing that no substantial or undue adverse effect on adjacent properties present. That adverse effects are mitigated in the next step possible, the characteristics of the site are suitable for the use. It wouldn't put an undue burden on improvements, facilities or public services. Um, there's adequate assurance of continuing maintenance, um, no, no evidence that the use violates federal, state or local requirements, and there's a community need for the use of the proposed site. Um, in the approval criteria, so there is a development plan associated this that's being considered as part of this application. Um, that it complies with city standards and it's consistent with any approved subdivision plat rezoning concept plan or other land use approval. Provides adequate mitigation for any significant impacts resulting from the use and creates a positive precedent for the future cumulative development of the immediate area. Um, so as part of the, the staff report, there is an outline number of recommended conditions which were. Into and then recommended by planning commission. Um, there are, they are very similar between the two cases, uh, there are some differences which I'll note. Conditions A and B are the same for both, but they essentially say that the development plan that's associated with it. Um, is, is, is also approved with the conditional use permit. Um, there was a, a comment from the city and county of Denver that because wastewater will be provided to the site through the city and county of Denver. Um, the city and county of Denver does require the approval or request for ordinance for that ser, sanitary sewer connection. Um, so essentially there would be a restriction of a building permit issuance for the site until the city and county of Denver approves. By ordinance, the um, the wastewater connection. Um, there's a proposed condition on the limitation of the types of vehicles that are allowed for metal recycling. Operations, so essentially anything that's less than twenty-two feet in length. Um, the storage of inoperable vehicles or salvage. Um, vehicles over time would not be permitted. And then one of the proposed conditions for the solid waste transfer facility is that all non-recyclable waste will be contained within the facility. The transfer facility building that is, and that all waste accepted on the premises would be transferred into a trailer or indoors within twenty-four hours of receipt. The storage for the metal recycling, the whole crushed cars wouldn't be stored for more than seventy-two hours. And then no vehicle crushings permitted on site. Um, all work performed on vehicles, so that's draining fluids, that's um. Basically doing the work to disassemble any vehicles that are brought to site would need to be in, and to find a containment area and approved concrete service to meet EPA. Um, requirements for um fluid discharge into streams, making sure that that's contained in an approved container. Um, that the facility would not generally accept hazardous materials and the property would be kept clean and free of debris. And then for conditional H, all these conditions apply to both. They would have to obtain and provide copies of any applicable state or federal regulatory agency permits, the Community Development Department. Prior to operation on the site. The applicant would notify the Community Development Department in writing in the event the use is described in the conditional use permit is discontinued. And basically they would have to provide an annual report detailing any landowner um complaints that are adjacent to them. And then at the time, this would be considered for re-renewal, um, the Community Development Director would review um the first five years of such. Um the first five years of such report and determine if there is a significant history of violations. And then based on the assessment, determine whether or not a reo- or reopening of the conditional use permit would be required. Um to be re reviewed by planning commission and city council. Um the required public notification was conducted for the site, um thirteen adjacent property owners were notified. Um there is a notice in the Commerce City Senate, Senate express, then five signs posted on the property. Um and as of October, um staff has received one request for additional information or comments. It was from one of the adjacent property owners who inquired about public improvements, traffic conditions and other site improvements that would be proposed as part of the development. Um on October sixth, the planning commission voted five to zero to recommend approval with conditions. Um all the conditions that we went over, um to city council for both CUPs. And staff is available to answer any questions that you may have, um we do also have the applicants. Um here to present tonight, but following any staff questions, I'll I'll turn the presentation over to them.
And Dominic, real quick, can you let me know who I need to move over?
Um if you could move Ed Dolan. Um let me remember the other names here, um Craig Urick and Peter Wall.
Alrighty, thank you.
Are there any questions for staff at this time? Councilmember Noble.
Mr. Martinelli, um what about any air quality issues? From this site, I don't know, I don't quite understand the process that they'll be undertaking and perhaps I should wait if. If it's better to wait until um. The applicant speak, I'm certainly happy to withdraw my question until then.
So I think what I'll do is I'll answer to the best that I can on some of these things, um there are some answers that I do have to your question, but. I do, one Edward Dolan is going to be giving the applicant presentation, he'll be able to talk a little bit more about the operations. Um but generally my understanding of what the biggest air quality impact could be from this facility would be dust. And one of the biggest um mitigation um techniques that they're proposing is actually to do concrete paving for the majority of it. Um so basically, if you had a bunch of trucks driving around on a, on an unpaved surface that that kicks up dust and that causes a number of air quality concerns. Um I believe they also do have some best management practices in terms of. The actual like crushing of cars in in um the actual like metal recycling facilities. Um I know we've looked through the diagrams for that, that material, but I I do believe that there are some um BMPs that. They were put in place to reduce the amount of uh dust that comes from metal recycling facilities. And then on the east side, one of the biggest improvements that they're proposing for the solid waste transfer facility. Is essentially conducting most of the sorting and all the actual activity in that indoor indoor nineteen thousand square foot facility.
And would it be self contained in that it wouldn't get into any of the. Underground streams or groundwater, the chemical company was the source of dioxide in our water.
So that part of it as well as through um proposed detention ponds and stormwater management. And the paving of it as well will potentially accommodate for some of that, but I will let the applicant. Answer some of those questions more in depth following their presentation. Um there are also EPA requirements on um fluid leakage and all of that, so anything where. You're bringing in cars and you're going to be dismantling them and removing them. A lot of where you would have potentially harmful chemicals that would come from runoff, I think we're we're accounting for that in some of the conditions to make sure that. Um specific types of hazardous materials or anything with freon is prohibited. And that when there is dismantling and some of those activities that are occurring or in proper areas that are contained where. There's not a risk of liquid leakage to water systems.
Thanks.
Any other questions for staff at this time? Seeing none, please proceed with the applicant.
Well, turn it over to you, Ed, I'm gonna pull up the presentation here.
Okay, thank you very much. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, I appreciate the time today. Um we'll try to move this along as quickly as possible, but then I'll be available to answer. Any and all questions. So, um if you want to go to the next slide. We can talk about myself and my partner's experience in these types of businesses. Uh to start with, Craig Urick, uh. Currently owns specialty metals company, but uh out of high school, uh out of east high school. Started a recycling company, uh which was built into all recycling. Uh became the largest recycler in this part of the country. Uh went from himself to us employing over two hundred employees. Uh recycling up to fifty thousand tons a month. Um and did that for uh over twenty years. And then myself, I've been involved with waste and recycling, uh including. Um wood recycling and scrap metal recycling. And uh permitted uh a transfer station in Adams County. That ran for uh eleven years without any issues. Uh we were under uh quarterly. Inspections by Tri County Health. Um that were unannounced, so we had to be on our toes all the time. And we're very uh conscious about doing that. You know, we 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 do these businesses because, yes, you know, we need to make a living. But we do, you know, believe in recycling and the environment and. Uh even the waste transfer stations provide a. Uh i- in more environmentally friendly way to move waste by consolidating truck traffic. Uh from anywhere from ten to possibly twenty. Truckloads into a single truckload, so even that has a environmental benefit. So if we want to move on to the next. Uh slide, there we go. So, as I was touching on, you know, what we're trying to do at our very heart, we're, we we are a. Green company, we're committed to doing things the right way. We are accepting of all the regulations and. Having any departments, either the city, the state or the federal. Departments come in, renew or review what we're doing. And uh, you know, we're, we're happy to do that and uh. You know, probably one of the biggest things we're excited about if we're lucky enough to be able to come to this Commerce City. Is creating. Probably a minimum eighty jobs, but it could be up to a hundred and fifty. And it's going to be, uh you know, jobs that, you know, uh some will be, you know, for. People with minimum skills, all the way up to, you know, accountants and controllers and managers and. You know, one of the things we've always done is try to, you know, promote from within and. Promote that our employees can advance themselves. And help them, you know, not only themselves, but their families. So if we want to go to the next slide. Uh real quickly, you know, I talk about the fact that, you know, uh these facilities are going to be open to the public. And thus to inspection all the time, so. You know, we're going to have to comply with EPA, uh DOT for our trucking operations. Uh CD, PHG and Tri County Health Department. And uh we're used to working with these uh agencies. We understand what they're expecting and we've. We're proud of the fact that we always run a good, clean facilities and, you know. We understand it's not a, the most, you know, attractive type of the facilities. But we do believe in what we're providing for the city. Uh you know, and and these businesses have to exist in all major cities and. But, you know, they do for a benefit to the environment and to what's going on with the city. So, um. But with that, if we move on to the last one, but I'll open it up to any and all questions.
There any questions for the applicants at this time? Seeing none, well, thank you for being here, sir.
Oh, thank you for having me.
Will the clerk recognize any persons registered to speak on this matter?
Mayor Hughesman, no members of the public registered to testify on this matter and no written comments were received by the deadline.
Thank you, sir, this time I will close the public hearing. Looking for a motion in a second to accept findings and recommendations of the planning commission in case number CU dash one two seven dash two zero. Mayor Pro Tim.
A motion to accept the findings, oh hold, hang on, sorry. Motion to accept the findings and recommendations of the planning commission in case number CU dash one two seven dash two zero.
Councilmember Hurst.
I second.
Have a motion and a second to accept the findings and recommendations of the planning commission in case number CU dash one two seven dash two zero, is there any discussion? Councilmember Hurst.
Failed to put my hand down, apologize.
Seeing no requests for a discussion, will the clerk please take a roll call vote?
Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank.
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you, at this time I'm looking for a motion in a second to approve conditional use permit one two seven dash two zero. Mayor Pro Tim.
Um I move that the city council enter a finding that subject to conditions, the requested conditional use permit. Associated development plan for the property located at fifty four hundred Monroe Street. Contained in case CU dash one two seven dash two zero. Meets the criteria of the land development code and based upon such finding, approve the conditional use permit and development plan. Subject to the conditions stated in the conditional use permit document in the council packet.
Thank you, councilmember Grimes.
I'll second the motion.
You have a motion in a second to approve conditional use permit one two seven dash two zero, is there any discussion? Mayor Pro Tim, councilmember Hurst.
I'm sorry.
Well, the city clerk, please take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank.
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you, this time I'm looking for a motion in a second to accept the findings and recommendations of the planning commission in case number CU dash one two eight dash two zero. Mayor Pro Tim.
A motion to accept the findings and recommendations of the planning commission in case number CU dash one two eight dash two zero.
Councilmember Madera.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to accept the findings and recommendations of the planning commission in case number CU dash one two eight dash two zero, is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take a roll call vote?
Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank.
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you, this time I'm looking for a motion in second to approve conditional use permit one two eight dash two zero. Mayor Pro Tim.
I move that the city council enter a finding that subject to conditions, the requested conditional use permit. And associated development plan for the property located at fifty four hundred Monroe Street contained in case CU dash one two eight dash two zero. Needs the criteria of the land development code and based upon such finding, approve the additional use permit and development. Development plan subject to the conditions stated in the conditional use permit document in the council packet.
Thank you, councilmember Grimes.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion in a second to approve conditional use permit one two eight dash two zero, is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the city clerk please take a roll call vote?
Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank.
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you, next item on our, on our agenda is resolution, it's resolution two zero two zero dash seven eight approving the. Government agreement with Metro wastewater. This item was covered in the public for related conditional use permit, does anyone in council have any further questions for staff? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion in a second to adopt resolution two zero two zero dash seven eight. Councilmember Hurst.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution two zero two zero dash seven eight.
Councilmember Grimes.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion in a second to adopt a resolution two zero two zero dash seven eight, is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the city clerk please read the title and take a roll call vote?
Resolution two zero two zero dash seven eight, resolution approving intergovernmental agreement with the Metro wastewater reclamation district. For the Second Creek Interceptor Project, councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
No.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank.
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Passes eight to one.
Thank you, next on the agenda is ordinances on first reading, ordinance twenty three hundred, a maximum fee for third party food delivery services. This ordinance was presented during a study session on October twenty sixth and the council received public testimony earlier in the meeting and in writing. Does anyone on council have further questions for staff? Seeing that I do have, councilmember Grimes.
Thank you, mayor, just one question, I'm curious about enforceability of this ordinance and if um. City staff have any concerns about being able to enforce it.
Good evening, I'm sorry, councilwoman, could you repeat your question, they were putting me in the um. The Zoom function while you asked it, thanks.
Sure, no problem, um just curious about enforceability of the ordinance, I I think the ordinance is a good idea, I'm just curious about. Whether or not uh it's feasible to enforce.
So, um as we discussed last, last week, um enforcement is going to be a little bit difficult. Um but as an update, um this ordinance does provide for a civil penalty consistent with the city's existing civil infraction penalties. Uh which means a violation can be taken electronically by the city and then it can be investigated. And we can do a citation by somebody designated uh by the city manager. Um if a company is cited for a violation and wants uh to protest the citation. They can use the city's existing administrative hearing process. And um if after investigation, um revocation or suspension of a business license can be sought by the city. Does that answer your question, sorry, that was a lot of legal, legal, but.
No, I think it does, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, I do have one question, while researching other third party delivery service fee limits. Ordinances that other cities have put out there, some cities have made it to where a third party uh organization cannot post a menu from a restaurant. Unless that restaurant is partnered with that organization, I don't see that in our ordinance, is there a reason why that was left out?
It actually is in the ordinance, mayor, um basically the first one performing delivery or other services or offering that service for a restaurant. Without the restaurant's consent, covers that issue there, that is an ongoing issue, yes.
Thank you.
And if I may clarify, it's somewhat different, I. I believe our ordinance is somewhat different from.
I believe our ordinance is somewhat different from Aurora and Denver's in that it doesn't prohibit expressly posting a menu. Which could be. Going a little far perhaps. This one does attempt to address a scenario where a third-party delivery platform. Is posting alternative menus or offering services without consent. And that's that's the root of the issue is a third-party food delivery platform. Attempting to negotiate with a restaurant after advertising for a sale. To a customer where the customer thinks that the relationship exists and the and the restaurant's already consented to it. So I believe we we do address that here.
Thank you. Just different wording. Any other questions for staff regarding this item? Being none, I'm looking for a motion in a second to introduce my council as seated and approve on first reading ordinance twenty three hundred. Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Make a motion to approve ordinance twenty three hundred to state it.
Mayor Pro Tim?
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion and a second to introduce my council as seated and approve on first reading ordinance twenty three hundred. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Alan Thomas, Mayor Pro Tim. Seeing no discussion, councilmember Alan Thomas?
No, I apologize. I was putting my hand down.
Councilmember Hearst?
Yeah, I was. I'm sorry. I didn't get to read through the whole ordinance earlier. I was just reading through it. As the meeting was going. But I believe I might have missed the part where we defined when this would go away. Is it when full opening, you know, full hundred percent capacity, fifty percent capacity? The only reason I bring that up is is similar to Mayor Hughesman. I was doing some research on others. Not just in Denver, but or in the Denver area, but around the country. And and it seemed that these third-party delivery companies. Took it upon themselves to, as soon as restaurants opened back up to fifty percent capacity, they stopped honoring the the law or the ordinance.
Councilmember, I heard you loud and clear last week. And so we made sure that this is effective through March thirty one of twenty twenty one. It being council's intent to let it go until that point or until you can do full capacity indoor dining. At which point it directs me to prepare an ordinance or an emergency ordinance to repeal this ordinance. So as not to be overly burdensome and and take out that ambiguity.
Yeah, I saw that. I saw the March thirty first. I just wonder if there was any other flex trigger, but I I'm perfectly okay with that. Thank you, sir.
Are there any other questions for staff or discussion? Being none, will the city clerk, please read the title and take a roll call vote?
Ordinance twenty three hundred, an ordinance enacting a new article for in chapter nine of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to establish a temporary maximum fee that can be charged for third-party food delivery services in the City of Commerce City, Colorado. Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hearst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is ordinance on second reading ordinance two two nine one, establishing electronic and emergency meeting procedures. Does anyone on council have any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion in a second to approve on second reading ordinance two two nine one. Councilmember Hearst?
Like to make a motion to approve on second reading, reading ordinance two two nine one.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion and a second to approve on second reading ordinance two two nine one. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, will the clerk please read the title and take a roll call vote?
Ordin- ordinance two two nine one, an ordinance of the City of Commerce City, Colorado, establishing electronic and emergency meeting procedures and authorizing the remote conduct of meetings. For the City of Commerce City during certain declared disasters and emergencies and repealing ordinance two two seven one. Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hearst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is administrative council business. First item of discussion, the city council meeting cancellations. Will interim city manager Tinklberg please lead the discussion?
Thank you, mayor. We have a couple, well, actually three meetings in question. One is November twenty three. That is the week of Thanksgiving. Currently, we have several items that are scheduled for that day. But if council wanted to cancel that meeting, we would move those items to a different meeting. Just means moving some things around. So needed to find out what council's wish is regarding November twenty three. That would be a study session.
Mayor Pro Tim?
I'm fine to keep it on that day.
Councilmember Hearst?
Me too. I I mean, I think we got a lot on our agenda. And I'm okay to keep it. My my one thing is. How does staff, I mean, does staff have any concerns with keeping it on that day?
No, we would prefer to keep it, but but again, it's your call because it's your meeting, so.
Understand. I I would vote to keep it.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yeah, I would also agree. Let's keep it.
Councilmember Smith?
I would agree to keep it.
Councilmember Hearst? Looks like we'll keep that meeting.
Okay, thank you. And then December twenty one, that is the week of Christmas and December twenty eighth. So the twenty first would be a regular meeting. We have a number of ordinances that are scheduled as well as for second reading. As well as a PUD amendment, a subdivision approval, a COP conditional use permit and a rezoning. So again, staff preference would be to keep it, but that is the week of Christmas. So what is your wish?
Does anybody have an opinion on canceling that meeting? Councilmember Grimes?
Thanks, mayor. I I'm okay keeping those as well. I feel like travel is going to be limited, at least for me this year. I don't know how other people feel, but I'm around, happy to have the meetings.
Mayor Pro Tim?
I'm the same as Councilwoman Grimes. I'm fine to keep them both.
Councilmember Noble?
I think you said that the twenty first was a regular meeting and the twenty eighth was a study session. Is that correct? I would keep the twenty first as a regular meeting. But the twenty eighth might be a good week for staff to take some breathing time at the end of the year and recuperate. Everybody needs a chance to do that. And since it falls over a long holiday weekend with Christmas on the Saturday. It would be reasonable, I think, to not come in on the twenty eighth of December.
Well, thank you for that. But what I was going to propose is that we update council on accomplishments for twenty twenty. And revisit the twenty twenty one objectives that council set at the last winter retreat. With the idea that we would have those kind of cleared away or taken care of is probably a better term. Before going into the winter retreat so that you don't have to spend time on those during the winter retreat. So that was my proposal for the twenty eighth. But again, your call.
Councilmember Hearst?
I think with the virtual option and the situation that we're all in right now, I'm more than willing to. Be at anything that we have.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes, I agree with whatever Roger recommends is best, but you know, I agree with either option.
Councilmember Grimes?
Just a quick idea. I know I'll likely be off work that day. Are other council members available to do it earlier in the day? And would that be possible for staff? That way we free up the evening.
We're available at any time during the day.
Are we talking about on the twenty eighth, though, earlier?
I was after the study session.
Yeah, I'm available if, you know, that's a good idea. I'm like, but Councilwoman Grimes available, so it suggests it. So I can meet earlier as well.
Any other input on this item? Mayor Pro Tim?
Um, I have to work on the twenty eighth, so that I wouldn't be able to do that earlier in the day.
Councilmember Hearst?
I'm in the same boat as as Mayor Pro Tim Frank, but I think I can do it after two that day.
Councilmember Madera?
Yeah, I'm not the same as Councilmember Frank. I have to work that day, but I'm I'm open to attending both those meetings on the twenty first and the twenty eighth.
Looks like we'll keep the meetings on the twenty first and the twenty eighth. And unless we change it later date, it'll stay at the normally scheduled time.
Thank you for that direction.
Next on the agenda is litigation settlement. Will city attorney Sheasley please lead the discussion?
Thank you, Mayor Hughesman and members of council. Very brief item tonight. The city had been named in a lawsuit regarding a injury allegedly occurred on a sidewalk. The parties have negotiated a settlement at no cost to the city. But one of the items is a release by the city of any claims that the city may have had against one of the co-defendants. arising out of that incident. I recommend executing this release and I'm asking for authorization to sign that, a settlement agreement, including that release on behalf of the city.
Are there any questions for Mr. Sheasley regarding this? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion to authorize the city attorney to execute a settlement agreement in this matter, including the release as described. Mayor Pro Tim?
Um, I want to authorize the city attorney to execute a settlement agreement in this matter, including the release as described.
Councilmember Hearst?
Hold a second.
Have a motion and a second to authorize the city attorney to execute a settlement agreement in this matter, including the release as described. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Gibson, will you take a roll call vote?
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hearst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Next on the agenda is the interim city manager advisory opinion. Will interim city manager Tinklberg please lead the discussion?
Um, I had provided that earlier last week to city council and then it was enclosed in the packet. The conclusion is, given the facts that were outlined in the opinion itself in the report. There is no conflict of interest. And that's basically derived from the charter rules and also city council policy. So. As the facts exist that were presented, there is no conflict of interest. If council would want to change the rules, that's council's prerogative within the council policies. Any questions regarding that?
Are there any questions for Mr. Tinklberg regarding this? Seeing none, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any council members wishing to make administrative council business? Councilmember Noble?
Thank you. Is Mr. Martinelli here?
He is, Councilmember Noble. Give me just one moment to move him back over.
Okay, thanks.
All right, I'm back.
There you are. Hi. Okay, here were my questions. On the map and in the table, it showed that the Owl site was active. But two DSUs, four, seven. Let me see here. Oh, where'd it go? Four, seven. Three and four, seven, four. Oh, I'm sorry, four, seven, four and four, seven, five were pulled by extraction. Those two DSUs cover reunion north of one hundred and fourth and also Buffalo Mesa. And so I'm curious as to how the Owl application stays alive without the drilling and spacing unit.
So to clarify, when you you ask that question, you're you're referencing the state applications, right?
Well, the drilling and spacing unit, yes.
Yeah. So my understanding from how it works is in terms of getting the state permits to be able to like commence operations. Obviously, you have to have the Form Two, which is the individual well bore for each well that's planned to be drilled, the two A for the location and the spacing unit. My understanding is in terms of submitting applications is that you need all three to to commence operations. But at the time that one is withdrawn, you don't have to withdraw a spacing unit application. I think we've seen it in the past where. If you look and you go to the COGCC like website and the map, there, I mean, there's an area entirely north of Commerce City that the majority of the area has a drilling and spacing unit. Sometimes they'll withdraw that and then apply for a new one. But I I mean, there's there's a number where there was this drilling and spacing it applied for and the wall never came through and they never actually withdrew it. So you need all three approvals from the state to begin operations. But because you withdraw an application doesn't mean that the other ones associated with it are automatically withdrawn. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Thank you. Then the second question is. Given that the rules and regulations. The night before, oddly enough, the night before the election last year was postponed by the city council. And here we are the night before the election again. So a year has passed. Without new rules and regulations, we completed our study session discussions about it in the summer. Other than the one about financial assurances. I'm curious why we can't vote on these sooner than January and February. I'm concerned about waiting longer.
So Jason, you want to jump in on that?
Thank you, Dominic, and thank you, Councilmember Noble. Good evening to Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and City Councils of the body. That's a very good question. And I I would say as staff, after we received at our. Last city council meeting confirmation consensus on all items having been addressed. So we then looked at, obviously, we have certain posting requirements and timelines and deadlines in order for us to be able to bring these items forward. So I will try to be succinct in what went behind our thinking in this matter. One, looking at where we're at in the in the year with some of the other, as we call ourselves internally, environmental smart projects. Between the Suncor SAP RFA process, as Mr. Martinelli had spelled out. That it has gone live and will have to be submitted by the end of December. With having to work through the environmental consultant RFP, which obviously aligns in in the December timeframe. Also working through, I would say, going through version control, making sure that we have addressed. Coherently and comprehensively the comments that have been received as part of our red lines and and putting that out to the public for its review. Also, ought to be noting that a a planning commission meeting, when they had last heard the item in. In last year, last November. It's our process, given that what they heard then is substantially different to what we have now. And so bringing that document back for them. And weighing that in and knowing that we don't have a November planning commission, it then pushes. And weighing that in and knowing that we don't have a November planning commission, it then pushes us into December. For December, we have a full docket for our planning commission. With development review projects, which then led us to a January timeframe for this item. Ultimately allowing for us to make sure that we're going through the appropriate version control. And associated documentation that we can provide and for the broader community. And then being able to look at how we handle our cases where we go to a planning commission, then a following city council, which in this essence will lead to February. And then making adjustments based on our process to the second meeting or to the first meeting in March. So that was what was the precipice behind the development of our schedule. Balancing other commitments and balancing basic timeframes with where we stand in the year.
And Jason, is there a couple? Could I add a couple things to that as well? I think part of it is due to the holiday schedule as well, and given that we're towards the end of the year. Normally, we would we would potentially be able to fast track a second reading. But if you look at the calendar and given Martin Luther King Junior Day and President's Day in February, it limits the ability to. Use one of those council meetings to kind of shift up the schedule. And given how much review this has gone through through multiple stakeholder processes, the. Study sessions that we held over the summer, bringing it back to planning commission, we did want to take the time to do version controls, as Jason mentioned, but also provide. A good overview and synopsis for city council, or I'm sorry, for planning commission. As to what changes have been made and how the document is different and how it's evolved over time throughout the process. So with the competing interests, that's a number of of things to to prepare and get in place to make sure that it's ready to go.
And to that, I'm I'm sorry, ma'am, I didn't mean to cut you off.
My concern is that. Any of the rules or regulations that we might have come up with could be impacted by anything happening in the other direction. For example, the thousand-foot setback. If there are developments going in or going through the approval process right now. That will be able to slip in under that rule without it having any impact because of our delay on. Implementing rules, then that would concern me greatly.
I appreciate that, ma'am, and I and I would offer this. Obviously, we we put the schedule based on what we have identified to. Be due diligent for both our stakeholders who we've invested time with, but also with what we've heard from our council. As it relates to that feedback and making sure that we've captured it correctly so that we don't misstep as we present this final product to you. Now, once again, that is our, that's, I would say, our best estimate, but if council feels differently as it relates to the schedule that's been. That's been put for your 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 consumption and and discussion to give us feedback, then obviously we're always going to welcome that. So I just wanted to share that.
How can we be alerted if something is happening? I mean, it it concerns me that we began this at the beginning of the summer in June. And now we're in November. And I just am looking at all of the building and construction and dirt moving that's going on. And realize that some of this could easily. Fall into place without us having any of this. As an ordinance or any other method to control public health and safety issues.
So for. For me, ma'am, if I if I can just ask this question, just to make sure that I'm clear. You're more concerned about the potential influx of residential development. To occur in the absence of these regulations and standards in place to limit. Or to limit the ability of that new residential development that may fall within that one thousand-foot setback. Is that? Just want to make sure that I'm clear on what I'm hearing.
Um, yes, Mr. Rogers, that is one. And then the second one is whether any new applications should come in. I mean, obviously, extractions fall under the regional operators agreement that was signed last September. But any other applications that come in or any applications that come in that have been withdrawn and are then resubmitted.
So very good point. I'll I'll try to work backwards. Obviously, I know I've communicated more broadly that obviously out of the five of the seven that have come in, the two that have not been submitted. Are anticipating potentially to come back in later this month. I would say even with respect to the consensus we've received from our last meeting with council. With the just the basic requirements of how we would have to to post notice and have documentation ready. We would not be able to be able to come back before you all. That would, I would say, influence and or require. Certain adjustments based on that code language for those two applications. Just from a timing perspective of when we came to you and when those would come back. Just to kind of share that from a timing perspective for you, ma'am. As it relates to other oil and gas permit activity. My opinion in that, as far as new applications coming in, we have not had any activity. And once again, that can always change. Once again, on a whim and on, you know, the face of a dime, that can always change. But for the last six to eight months, there's been very little activity to no activity. Outside of the acti- acti- application that were on file from extraction of oil and gas. We have not been approached by other vendors seeking oil and gas operations within the municipal boundaries of Commerce City. So I I based off of just that review and looking at the activity, I would value that to be a a low impact. But once again, like I said, things could change. As as it relates to residential development. I would say that is that is a toss-up. New development could come in tomorrow, new development could come in. Two months, three months, four months, five months, six months down the road, we just don't know. So that's always a variable at play as we're always looking at. New new language, new standards, new regulations. And we were very closely with the city attorney's office on, you know, what's the effect and impact on those developments in our process or not in our process at the timing of which. Items are adopted. So, you know, we try to balance that as much as we possibly can, and I appreciate and understand your concern. And I would only simply offer again, staff is trying to be diligent in addressing. The overall council's desire to move this on to the next stage while also factoring in other. I would say other other variables that we know we have to be able to meet.
And one, this is a final question. What? How are you taking this new COGCC rules into consideration then as? As you look at these, such as when the resubmissions come back? That you're anticipating from extraction, does the ROA still apply to those resubmissions? Or does this new COGCC rules apply?
So to answer that question, as it as it pertains to the the oil and gas LDC update schedule, I think you you definitely are right that. We had a pretty significant overhaul of the oil and gas conservation commission regulations. Our oil and gas special counsel, Matt Sora, was heavily involved in those rulemakings, and we were a party to a number of them as well. So part of the review that we're doing as well is understanding what's changed at the state. Versus what we have in our draft regulations, what we have in our regional operator and all of that. We don't, we're looking at what changes are in place. There are a number of changes that are somewhat different, but we're noting those and. And potentially what may need to be retooled and highlighted is is kind of the differences between that, but. There are many areas where we really did end up in the same place from what we have proposed and where the state went. There's there's certainly some fine tuning that needs to account for the rest, which is kind of what we're doing, this due diligence process, to make sure that all of that's processed. In terms of the regional operator agreement, the the permits that are under the regional operator agreement essentially apply to that facility. We we know, we monitor, and we're looking at the differences and the changes. But essentially, at the end of the day, the state permit is going to go through the state permit process. And I believe that through the COGCC's directors, objective directors criteria and how they're handling applications. That's that's essentially going to be on their end on how they choose to handle that. But it looks like, given the the inactivity on the oil, all of these oil and gas permits in Commerce Cities, it looks like that's essentially in hold and how they. Until they figure out how they want to proceed forward. I'm sure there will be some difference versus existing well sites that have been permitted versus ones that are kind of in the pipeline that actually haven't been constructed like the. The proposed facilities for extraction oil and gas. So however they choose to go about that is is essentially their call.
Thank you very much, and thank you for staying up for my questions.
Of course. Councilmember Hearst?
Yeah, thank you for calling on me, because I just wanted to tag on to that question very quickly. So I was, a couple of weeks ago, I brought this up, but I didn't have as much details. So I've been told, and I want to see if this is true, that we've. Put on hold a development that's on the southwest corner of Ninety-Sixth and Tower, commercial, residential. Mixed use, because it's within a thousand feet of a well that needs to be plugged and abandoned. And the reason that it's not gotten plugged and abandoned, even though it's been scheduled to for more than two years. Is because of the current financial situation for the company that's scheduled to do so. Is that true? I mean, I have no basis to know if it's true or not. I was just told that told this and then heard more information about it. So what I what I'm really getting at is it sounds like we may be delaying. Projects because we haven't decided the LDCs yet.
So when you say that, when you say delaying projects on the southwest corner of Ninety-Sixth and Tower. I know there's a number, there's about six oiling or existing oil and gas wells that were within that facility. I know that about five of them. Have been plugged and abandoned and and went through their subsequent reports with the state. There is a pending application, which, so I don't know in terms of. Land use, how much detail we can get into, but there is a PVD amendment that is proposed for. This basically Ninety-Sixth and Tower, that entire half of the section that is moving forward and is still under review by staff and. Should be reviewed by planning commission and city council fairly soon.
Good, appreciate it. I just trying to follow up on what I what I heard. I would sure there's always more to the story.
Mr. Rogers?
Thank you, Mayor. I I guess my question in general is obviously having heard comments from 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 the council. And obviously, you all received our proposed schedule for PC and City Council. Is your desire to still move forward with staff's proposed schedule? Or is there any further additional questions, comments? Or feedback slash direction that you would like to get like to give us as staff with respect to that?
Are there any comments for staff regarding this? Seeing none, looks like you can proceed as scheduled.
Thank you, sir.
Next on the agenda are council reports. Interim City Manager Tinklerberg?
Nothing additional, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Sheasley.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to note, the litigation and pending ordinance reports went out today. This afternoon, I do have an executive session that I had placed on the agenda in anticipation of talking about a few items. I believe that could be postponed. Unless any council member desires to talk about anything on that report. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other council members wishing to make a report? Councilmember Hearst?
Yes, I would just like to say that. The boards of commission interview panel happened for the comprehensive plan advisory committee. And I was very impressed with the quality of applicants that we got and the amount of applicants that we got. There was a good amount of excitement or enthusiasm around part around participating in that. You know, advisory council, and I believe that we have fifteen extremely qualified and good candidates for that. For that advisory council that we will put in front of you at next city council meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Noble?
Yes, I had a meeting with BSS Strategies in Sewell, Danfley. Also, I attended via Zoom, of course, Adams County Business and Recovery. Response group and the follow-up meeting on communication that they had in the same week. I think if anything, this has raised the issue of not having. Current information on licensees of businesses in Commerce City. And even if you don't have to pay for another license, there. Would be plenty of good reasons to renew the license annually just to bring up, just to. Ensure that the information is the same and the contact information is the same. We could have done so much more for our businesses if we had known who they were, where they were, and how to reach them during this pandemic. And to have to rely on. Facebook or. Emails or social media in general, it has not worked at all. And it's been a real challenge for many industries, the entire entertainment industry, as Maria Gonzalez was explaining last week. The Latino entertainment industry had no clue that we had funds to be giving away. And they, of course, lost lot, lost, that's my. Surgery talking. They had lost lots of business over the summer because they weren't able to hold events. So I hope that that is something that we can do. I don't know if it requires a motion or what, but somehow figure out how we can. Have an ongoing, up-to-date list of businesses in Commerce City.
Thank you. Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to report also that I had a meeting with the company nineteen oh six. Of course, it was a virtual meeting, very informative. And I also had the opportunity to get a tour of the Republic Services landfill off of Tower Road. If anyone has the opportunity, it is really interesting to see what actually goes on there, and you can get some great views of Commerce City. So just wanted to pass that on if anyone has an opportunity to look at. It's amazing the work they do there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members wishing to make a report? Seeing none, I do not have a report to give at this time. Next on the agenda is an executive session. The city attorney has indicated that the scheduled executive session is not needed at this time. Does any council member wish to conduct their executive session? Seeing none, we will adjourn to the ECA GID meeting. This time we'll call the ECA GID meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Chair Hughesman?
I'm present.
Vice Chair Frank?
Present.
Board Member Madera?
Present.
Board Member Alan Thomas?
Present.
Board Member Noble? Board Member Wardiola?
Present.
Board Member Hearst? Board Member Grimes?
Sorry.
That's okay. Board Member Grimes?
Present.
Board Member Smith?
Present.
Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Yeah, at this time, I'm looking for a motion to excuse those members not present. Mayor or Vice Chair?